Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristy Zuccovich. Welcome to the May 13th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us this morning, and of course, we use this time to let you know about activities going on around Sedgwick County. And commissioners, we do have a number of activities at the InTrust Bank Arena. We're gonna have the quarterly report here in a little bit, but I wanted to remind you that the Wichita fours will be in action on May 16th and the 23rd. And this summer, there are three concerts, one in June, July, and August, that were picked just for the county commissioners. So raise your hand if you've got your tickets. The first one is June 11th, it's Lil Wayne.
Lil Wayne?
I don't see your hands up. Okay, Lady Antebellum, July 25th. Might be alright. And this one, I know, is really in your era, Boston, August 9th. And the reason I know it must be in the era, because I'm pretty sure that Chairman Ransaw, you had an eight-track tape player in your car, didn't you? You had that eight-track tape of Boston-
I didn't, but my mom did.
Oh. Alright, well, before we get on the agenda, I told you, we don't have a quiz this morning, but you know, I'm always trying to help you out, and so, I wanted to let you know that it's time for you all to start thinking about your summer vacations. School's about out, and so, it's about time to think about summer vacations. And I'd like to incorporate a little bit of history for Commissioner Peter John. And May 14th, 1804, Lewis and Clark departed St. Louis on their expedition to the northwest, and they arrived at the Pacific Coast of Oregon, November of 1805, and returned to St. Louis in September of 1806. So can you imagine the road trip that lasts for over two years? And how that must have been? So just imagine, you're gonna take a one-week trip, that's okay. But if you wanted to set out, either with your families, or like Lewis and Clark, maybe you have a Howell and Unruh trip that you decide to take instead, then you can look at June 26th through the 28th in 1804, so you could do that this year. They were in Kansas City, and that was where they saw the first buffalo of their journey, so it gives you this little historical reference. And they celebrated July 4th near Atchison, which was the 28th year of American independence. So as we celebrate July 4th, all these many years later, they were celebrating the 28th year. So there's you some Kansas to get you started on your road trip. And I always want to give you some road trip pointers, because you know, I know all of you have been in a car with your family, a big family in the car, for a long drive. From, just from the mom's perspective, the Marriott or the Hilton is always a better choice than a tent. If you're thinking an RV, it better have air conditioning. If you're gonna, if you're gonna cook, I would suggest, or have to have meals, eat out frequently, because it's not a vacation for mom if she has to cook. Fixing breakfast means opening the donuts. Don't be thinking we're gonna cook over the grill. And you must have road trip games or videos, so. Anybody going on a road trip this summer, since we're not going to Lil Wayne, maybe? But we want you to have fun. I know that you're all gonna be enjoying the, the summer before you come back and make all the, the heavy lifting of the, the budget that we'll have to deal with. But Commissioner, today's agenda, we have a number of items that you have to, to make decisions. First off, we're gonna have some appointments to serve on county boards. We're gonna have our InTrust Bank Arena quarterly report. We're gonna have consideration of agreements. And commissioners, this is the second favorite day of the year for, for David Spears. His first favorite day is the Roadshow in December, and his second favorite day is the Public Works Proclamation. So, we will hear from David, all about roads, I'm sure, so. Chairman Ransaw, how about you get the meeting underway?
Absolutely, thank you very much, Kristy. With that, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for May 13th, 2015. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invocation to be led by Pastor Bruce Freeman, Cross of Glory Lutheran. Please remain standing for the flag.
Gracious Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for those willing to serve, the public. We ask, Lord, that the many people that are here, their voices will be heard. Their problems and concerns will be voiced, and that the commissioners will have open hearts and minds and ears to those voices. We ask that you give wisdom to our commissioners, as they ponder and vote, that everything might be pleasing to you, that they might take under consideration the many lives that they are responsible for. Now be with this gathering, may your spirit guide and be with all of us. All this, we pray in your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Freeman for being here today. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Rule call, Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransaw.
Present. Next item, please.
Proclamations, item A, proclamation declaring National Public Works Week.
Commissioners, I have the following proclamation read into the record. Whereas public work service provided in our community are in an integral part for our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as streets, highways, bridges, drainage improvements, environmental services, household hazardous waste, and noxious weed control, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is especially dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work officials, and whereas efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is substantially influenced by the public's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it reserved that I, Richard Ransaw, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 17th through 23rd, 2015, as National Public Works Week in Sedgwick County, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works, and to recognize the contribution which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I move we adopt the proclamation.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. We have David Spears here to receive the proclamation.
Morning, David Spears, Director of Public Works. Since 1960, APWA has sponsored National Public Works Week. Across North America, or more than 28,000 members in the US and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to their daily lives, planning, building, managing, and operating in the heart of our local communities. There would be no community without the quality of life public works provides. This year's theme, "Community Begins Here," speaks to the essential nature of public work services in support of everyday quality of life. Now, thank you for the proclamation. Here's the poster this year.
Thank you, Dave, thanks for everything you do. I don't see any comments from commissioners. Commissioner Norton?
Well, I would be remiss without saying, because I've heard it every year, and Dave didn't say it this year, but many times he'll say that infrastructure is the mother's milk of economic development. And as we make sure that our roads and bridges and drainage and infrastructure is right in Sedgwick County, it does add to the vitality and mobility of the community, but also adds to the economic value of the community. So thank you, David, for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk. Mr. Peter John.
I'd just jump in, while I do want to thank David, I know there are a few other folks down at Public Works who do a little bit of heavy lifting, too, and I think we ought to, I'd be remiss if this commissioner didn't, didn't mention all the, all the folks who are out there with the miles of road and bridge projects we've got scheduled for this year and beyond. And if you want to add a few comments, Mr. Director of Public Works-
Well, no, they, they do the heavy lifting, not me. It's sort of like, we had a former commissioner, Commissioner McCray said, it's where the rubber meets the road, and it's literally our guys out in the field.
Thank you. I wanted to get that on the record, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, madam clerk. Next item?
Citizen inquiries, item B, request to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding budget cuts.
I, I believe, this is for Renee Strunk, but I think we've been notified that she doesn't need to be, she's not coming today, okay? So we can skip to item C.
Item C, request to address the Board of County Commissioners regarding the Sedgwick County Appraiser's Office.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Leon Saddle, address 19210 West Central, Goddard, Kansas. And I'd like to first give you some pamphlet what I'm gonna talk about.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here today, I've got questions for the county commission to get to, from the county appraiser. They won't give me any reasonable answers, they, their answer is, I don't know, or it's just the way it is. Okay, I've got four questions, and I'll tell you what they are first, and I'll try to go through them, I don't know if I have enough time to go through them individually. Okay, 2014, they went from a 20-year depreciation on outbuildings up to a 40-year depreciation. Is this legal? Okay, second question, why are homes in rural taxed for site improvements but not in the city? This tax code, which is 693, site improvements, depreciation dollars, adds $14,800 to homes valued because it has sewer, water, and electricity. Don't the homes in the city have sewer, water, and electricity? I feel like this is not a legitimate tax. Number three, why is tax code 477 farm utility buildings on farm sites taxed at 25%? And if it's in residential property, it's taxed 11.5%? Number four question, why do they round to the closest dollar, to the closest $10, and to the closest $100? Okay, on question one, depreciation from 20 years to 40 years. Okay, my shed went up 512% in 2014. Shed size is 63 by 39. I appealed at hearing, hearing officer asked, was it cemented? Answer, one-third. Does it have electricity? Answer, one-third. Does it have insulation? Answer, no. Does it have water? Answer, no. Does it have a shower or toilet? Answer, if there's no water, there's no shower or toilet. Okay, hearing results, shed was appraised at $2,390 in 2013. Before hearing, shed was appraised at $14,630 in 2014. After hearing, shed was appraised at $14,400, they dropped it by $230. Appealed again, went to the Sedgwick County Extension Building for the hearing, gave and saved evidence, as I did in the first hearing. At the hearing, asked the appraiser, why did they lower it by $230? He said, because the shed wasn't fully cemented. To cement the rest of the shed, which would be 1,674 square feet, it'd be approximately $6,700, so why did they only lower it by $230? Okay, hearing results for that hearing, no change, because property owner didn't give no evidence, no proof. Okay, so I appealed again, went to the PICA for the next hearing, brought same evidence, except I told the three judges that I felt like what the county commissioner did, changing depreciation from 20 years to 40 years, was illegal. Reason, Kansas has grandfather law, which means buildings prior to 2014 would be at 20 years, and after they announced the 40 years, then they would be at 40 years. Example, you buy a car, say, in 2010, and it was a warranty of 10 years, 100,000 miles. Now in 2015, they changed the warranty to five years, 50,000 miles. Okay, that car sold in 2010, still got the same warranty, it's got the 10 years and 100,000 mile warranty. Okay, results of the hearing in Topeka. In two working days, the Board of Tax Appeals from Topeka ordered the Sedgwick County Appraiser to bring shed back to 2013 value, which was $2,390. This means to me that they agreed with me on the legality of it. Okay, question number two, rural homes in the county have $14,800 taxed but not in the city. This is code 693, site improvements. This tax is for sewer, water, and electricity systems, only on rural homes and not in the city. My question is, don't they have, in the city, don't they have sewer, water, and electricity? It, to me, this is not a legitimate tax. It's more like a flat tax, because it's always $14,800 every single year. Property taxes change, it goes up or goes down from year to year. This $14,800 is like, it's on every single year, the same amount. Or maybe a better explanation of it, maybe it's a penalty tax for living out in the country in, in Sedgwick County, I don't know. Also, the surrounding counties don't have this tax. Another thing on that tax, if you live next to the city, a town, or whatever, especially in God, where I'm from, they annexed about 11 or 12 residents outside the city into the city two years ago. They still have that $14,800 on it. I questioned the appraiser's office about it, and they said, well, they didn't know. Okay, do I have time to go into the rest of the questions or not?
Thirty seconds.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, buildings on farm sites with code 477 farm utility buildings are taxed at 25%, but buildings, residential property with 477 farm utility buildings are taxed 11.5%. According to the State of Kansas Department of Taxation in Topeka, any building with the code 477 farm utility building, whether it is on a farm side or residential site, it will be taxed at 25%. If it's called a farm building, then it must be being used for farm purposes. I called this Topeka the first time, and I just asked a question, can you have a 477 farm utility building on a residential site? They said yes, and I thought, okay, I guess I didn't, I ain't gonna win on that. And then later on, I thought, I asked it wrong, so I called them two weeks later, I said, if you've got a 477 farm utility building on a residential site, at what percent will it be taxed? And he said, 25% is a farm utility building, whether they're using it or not. And he said, they, they called it a farm utility building, so it will be taxed at 25%. Okay, number four question, why can they round off to the nearest dollar, or nearest $10 then, or nearest $100? And I've got examples, and you're sure, as later on, Pastor, where they, like on one, it was $38,372, so they rounded that off to $38,400. And then the appraisal on the cost of valuation sheet, they rounded it off to a dollar, which that makes sense, they've always done it with government anyway, with income taxes. But then they get that number, and then he said, okay, that, that number turned out to be like 167, 587, then they round that off to 157, 590. They go to the next $10, and then they do the same thing on the building. It don't make sense, now I can see on the cents, on getting rid of, you know, just to a dollar, because that's eliminating two cents, two digits. But when you go to the $10, you're actually adding another process on, and you're changing two numbers, you go to $100, so they can't say they're using it for simplification. That's really all I got. I just don't think, my reason I'm here, I don't think they're being fair, and they're going by what's, by the law. They're making their own rules. And I think on the depreciation, I'm almost 100%, I'm sure I'm right on that.
Thank you for coming today and presenting this material. I'm, I know you're not the only one having a problem with the depreciation issue, and it's interesting to hear what happened at the BODA on, on your case, so I'm gonna ask the appraiser to get the commissioners a copy of the order from BODA, and so we can read that and follow up on that. And I appreciate you coming here, because that may help some other people as well. Commissioner Peter John?
Yes, thank you, and I also appreciate you coming here, because this is, there are several issues that you've raised, and some of these are issues that the county appraiser reports directly to the county commission. However, and he has to operate under state law and the state rules that the Property Valuation Division puts out. And of course, I'm glad you were able to go to the Board of Tax Appeals, a lot of folks are either uncomfortable in doing so, and going forward, and proceeding down that road, and taking the action that you did. I've also had problems on this change in the depreciation schedule, and I have concerns about it going forward. Having said that, I think there's a problem, and it's a state problem, and it's a problem that's not easily addressed, and I'm gonna defend the appraiser's office in one specific area. And that is, is if they, if there's a detached building, it could be a farm utility vehicle if there's a farm utility shed, if there's tractors in there or other farm equipment. However, if it's being used as a, basically a detached garage, that would be assessed, and your, the differences that you raised in terms of the ratios, you said taxed at 25%. That's the assessment ratio on commercial property under the state law. Residential property is assessed at 11.5%, utility property is assessed at 33%, and they're all appraised at market value. The assessment ratio is then applied against the middle of it to actually come up with the specific tax. So when the appraisers drives by, or takes a look at a satellite picture of a detached building, it's not always obvious, especially if the doors are closed, you know, is there a, is there a second car and a set of jet skis in there, and that's a detached garage building? Or is there a tractor in there, and it's basically a farm utility vehicle? And frankly, I don't want the appraiser going onto people's private property, or looking inside closed doors to try and take a look at it. So that puts the appraiser in a tough position on that issue. But having said that, I agree with you completely in terms of this change on the depreciation schedule from 20 to 40 years and doing it in one year. The appraiser's been given the challenge, and I've repeated it in my conversations with them, to follow state law and the rules and regulations promulgated by PVD to the best of his ability. If there are problems with that, then it's a state issue, it's not a county issue, although the county appraiser's the one who has to administer it. But I'm not aware of anything that came down from PVD, Property Valuation Division, would change the depreciation schedules, and, and I'm very disappointed that this was all slammed in one year, and had this significant impact on folks like yourself. And I want to thank you for coming in and speaking to us today, because there's a lot of folks, for one reason or another, wouldn't or couldn't. But if there's problems with the tax appraisal system, this commission needs to hear it. Our legislators need to hear it. Our governor needs to hear it. So I want to thank you for coming down and speaking to us this morning.
Bill, or Mike, could you guys make sure we get a copy of the, the BODA ruling on his particular case, either from Tricia or the appraiser?
Absolutely, Jim.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Sidell, I just wanted to, like, let you know a couple things I'm aware of, and I'd say thank you for being here today. I really think that you raised a really important issue. Before I was in this position as county commissioner, as a state legislator, when this change in policy began to be realized, it was last summer, as a legislator, I received a lot of phone calls from people in my district, were very, very upset. This is a step change, it was a, a policy change that apparently happened within this county, and I did do some work on that. I was told originally that this was something that was basically a, a policy change by the state PVD, and it was a statewide policy. I did some investigation and found that that wasn't true. This is a, a local, a local decision that was made. And so every county does have the ability, apparently, to change the depreciation schedules, and that's exactly what happened here. So there is actually a couple of different issues at play on these types of issues. One might be misclassification, as Mr., as Commissioner Peter John just mentioned. Misclassification might change you to a different percentage of tax rate, but that's really not what I think you're here about. You're here primarily because the, the number of years of depreciation change is a step change, and this is a local policy change that happened in Sedgwick County. So with that, with that in mind, we did meet with some legislators earlier, I should say, late last, late last, late last year, and I've met with them a little, a little bit this year, and we are working in a legislative solution. We need to have a statewide policy on this issue. This is really a state problem, and I appreciate you coming today to highlight that, and I'm really glad that you were successful in Topeka. I don't know that your, your ability there would preclude the county from reverting back to what they perceive as the right, right tax rate for you in future years, and so you may have an ongoing challenge, unfortunately, until the state laws change. And so, I do appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I would just like to point out that this was not a county commission change, this was not a legislative change, this was a policy change that the county made on their own, and they have the ability under state law to do so. And we need a legislative solution. And I do agree with what you're talking about, and I'd also point out to the, to the listeners today that, you know, our appraiser's office does have some, some subjective ability to, to do their job, and as a county commissioner, we're not really allowed to second guess their subjective nature. They've got to come in and judge the value of property, and that's really not what we're doing today. What I'm questioning is, is the policy that was set by a local, by local policy, and why, and why this is not a statewide policy. So, and of course, the step nature of this, went from a small number of years to a large number of years, which, which really made a huge difference in your value. So with that, I appreciate you coming out, and I'll, I just wanted to let you know, we're gonna continue to work on the issue, and I hope that legislatively, we see some legislators will step up and make this their, their issue. Thank you very much.
Mr. Peter John?
Well, just a quick follow-up, we've thrown a lot of information out to you, I don't know how clearly we spoke, and, and if there were any questions or thoughts you might have in response to our comments, but if you do, I'd want to give you the opportunity to let us hear, hear what you have to say before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to receive and file. I'll make that motion, now, Mr. Chairman.
I second that.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item, please.
Appointments, item D, resolution reappointing Mary Ellen Phillips to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging.
County Commissioner is Mike Papun, acting county counselor. You have before you today, a resolution reappointing Ms. Phillips to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging. The resolution's in proper form, and I'd recommend that you approve the resolution.
I move we adopt the resolution.
Second.
I was gonna ask, can we take D and E together, they're the same advisory council? Certainly.
If you want to take, I'll read the other one into the record. You can take them together if you want.
Okay.
The second resolution is reappointing Frances Sidell to the, as Commissioner Unruh's appointment, reappointment to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging, and this resolution is also in appropriate form, and would ask for you to recommend this as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve both resolutions.
Alright.
I'll say that, my second, I'll, I'll do that, too, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw.
Aye. Next item, please.
I believe Ms. Phillips is here.
Marion Phillips is not here.
She's not here. Okay. New business?
I'm sorry, are, are I the one of those people here today? I didn't, no. Okay, so we'll catch up with them later.
New business, item F, amendment to the funding agreement between Sedgwick County, Kansas, and Sedgwick County Zoo- Kansas and Sedgwick County Zoological Society.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hold, Assistant County Manager. Commissioners, as was announced already, item F is an amendment to the funding agreement between Sedgwick County and the Sedgwick County Zoological Society. The next two items, items G and H, are the same as item F, except for the named agencies. Item G is an amendment to the funding agreement between Sedgwick County and Exploration Place Incorporated, and item H is an amendment to the funding agreement between Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita, and the Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition, also referred to as GWDC. Also, all three items have the same or very similar recommended action. So as such, and I know there are a number of people here who want to speak on one or both, one or all three, one or two or all three of the items, so I would ask your indulgence to let me address all three of these items together, if you will. The Board of County Commissioners entered into the funding agreement with the Sedgwick County Zoological Society on the 11th day of September 2013, entered into a funding agreement with Exploration Place on the 23rd day of October 2013, and with GWDC and the City of Wichita on the 11th day of December 2013, to provide certain levels of funding for the years 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2018. Paragraph nine of the zoo and Exploration Place agreements states that either party may terminate the agreement by giving written notice to the other party by June 1 of each year, with the termination becoming effective January 1 of the following year. This same notice requirement is included in paragraph 12 of the GWDC agreement. In order for the county to address the funding of these agencies as a part of the county's yearly budget process, which is not completed until early August of each year, the action being recommended today is to change the date for the termination notice from June 1 to September 1 of any year, with the termination being effective January 1 of the following year. Again, this would allow the funding of these agencies as part of the county's yearly budget process, which starts in February of each year, but is not completed, as I mentioned, until around the second week of August. As such, the recommended items, action for items F and G regarding the Sedgwick County Zoo and Exploration Place respectively, is approve and authorize the chairman to sign the funding agreement to change the date that notice of termination to be given pursuant to paragraph nine of said agreements. The recommended action for item H regarding the City of Wichita and Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition is approve and authorize the chairman to sign the amendment to the funding agreement to change the date that notice of termination is given pursuant to paragraph 12 of that agreement. Again, I think you have a number of folks here wanting to speak, so that concludes my introductory remarks. Once you have completed your discussions on this item, I would recommend that you take the recommended action with respect of each of these items.
Okay, just a question for Mike. Can we vote on all these at the same time, or should we do them individually?
I would vote on them individually unless you, unless the commission intends to make the exact motion for all three items. I mean, if you want to nuance either, any of them, then you probably want to handle them separately.
Okay, well, we'll see what the commission wants to do, but what we'll do is, we'll let everybody speak on all three of these items, all in one group, and then we'll just proceed to vote on them either individually or collectively then.
Thank you.
I do want to say a few things before we get started here. There's been a lot written about this, and I think some people's minds are some misunderstanding or not understanding exactly what we're trying to do here, but as if, as we stand right now, the Sedgwick County does face a $10 million to $12 million deficit for the next year. The commission has thought it prudent to notify those, all of those people who receive county funding, that their funding may change as a result of that. We have about, I believe it's now 17 entities, is that right, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
About 17 entities total that we were intending to notify. The fact of the matter is, about 14 of them can be notified by letters. However, under advice of our legal counsel, we realize that three of those organizations have written contracts that require us to do something by June 1. So that's why these three organizations are on the agenda and the others are not. If we don't do something by June 1, then we lose our ability to be flexible going forward. Now, this, what we're going to do today is amend those contracts to give us time till September 1, which I think actually makes more sense, because the fact of the matter is, our budget isn't really done until August, so how do we know, tell people whether or not they're going to be cutting, if so, how much, or if they're going to stay the same? So really, even going forward in future years, it's actually going to be a better situation, I believe. So I'll be supportive of these motions here today. But it's important to point out that this, the idea was to give everybody notice. No one single organization is being singled out. Everybody's given notice. It just so happens that three organizations have formal written contracts that we need to, we have a deadline set by June 30 that we needed to meet. So with that being said, I have a list here of people who want to speak. We're going to give everybody approximately three minutes to speak, and you can speak on all three of these items, or one, or two, whatever you want, and then when we're done, we'll have commissioners give their comments, and we'll vote. Did you have something else?
Just that, Commissioner, I think there's a couple of people who arrived late and didn't get on the list. I would just...
When we're done, I'll ask if there's anyone else, so. But for right now, we'll just start going down in order of people who signed up, and we'll start first with Scott Oaks.
We greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak today and kind of review our 50-year agreement, their 50-year relationship that we had that started with the boo hoo, we needed a new zoo effort from our citizens, and some of those citizens are actually in the audience today. I'd like to tell you, on behalf of the society, we officially and unanimously support the amendment in front of you. You know, we all know that over the last 50 years, the formula's been pretty simple, and it's worked pretty well. We raised the money as a private, not-for-profit organization to build the exhibits at the zoo. Once those are completed, we turn those assets over to the Sedgwick County. Your part of the deal over the years has basically been pay the employees that are your employees, which are essentially the zookeepers. You know, we can go back and forth and talk about the monies, and we will do that. The one thing we are very concerned about foremost is visitor employee safety, and also animal welfare of the collection. Obviously, the increases in the budget that we've talked about basically go to pay for zookeepers. With that being said, it's, we can talk back and forth all day about economic impact, the $43 million that we bring in annually from our visitors, most of those outside of Sedgwick County. But at the end of the day, it comes down to the zoo costs the owner of a $100,000 house in Sedgwick County roughly four cents a day, and I think that's an incredible bargain when you look at what it does to our community. We're humbled to have the support of the community here today. That's why we give our time, that's why we volunteer, that's why we give our money out of our own pockets. So with that, again, appreciate the opportunity and look forward to further discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. And I'll apologize if I get anyone's name wrong as we go forward. Bill Bischoff?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Bill Bischoff, and I'm Chair of the Board of Exploration Place, and I want you to know that over the years, we've been very supportive, and thank you for supporting Exploration Place in our partnership. We have strong board support for the amendment to the agreement, and the agreement is very important, having a long-term agreement in terms of our fundraising. Most of our fundraising is focused on developing new exhibits or revising the exhibits that we have. For example, since we just, since we originally signed this agreement, we've had a fundraising for our new exhibit, Kansas Kids Connect, which we were very successful with, and I believe part of that has to do with the fact that we do have a funding agreement with the county, and we'll be opening that exhibit in September. We have ongoing fundraising for our new aviation gallery, and we like the agreement, and we'd like to see the agreement continued, because we have, it provides stability for planning for our future and serving our community with science, technology, engineering, and math education. We've also come to a new situation with the building, is that now it's 15 years old, and it suddenly requires a lot more maintenance than it did before. We've had to repair the concrete on the outside of the land building, and we're now facing new issues such as HVAC that we didn't have to face in the past 15 years. So we've got new problems arising with the age of the building, and we want to maintain them. It is a county building, and I want to thank you for your time and listening to me today.
Thank you very much. Next is Gary Schmidt.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair, I'm Gary Schmidt, 14,000 Pinnacle Drive, Chair of GWDC, and as a banker, I understand and appreciate the need to review the county budget before they make decisions about funding going forward. So GWDC understands the notice date, and we'll be glad to work with you on that. But speaking on behalf of over 100 businesses in the community that provide their own money to support GWDC, our biggest concern is canceling the private-public partnership of economic development in our community. 12 years ago, we started this partnership in order to eliminate duplication of efforts between the county and the city, each who had their own economic development efforts. And I can say that the partnership has streamlined these efforts to create more of a one-stop-shop for economic development for businesses in the community, both in the community and outside of the community, and it's provided more efficiency in government and also in business. The private sector puts $1 million to support GWDC, where the city and county each contribute $300,000. But very, very important that businesses feel like they should contribute and support businesses growing in our community. But unfortunately, too many people look at GWDC and say, oh, they're the ones that give out the incentives. Keep in mind, there's only one out of three opportunities that come in front of us are programs that may include local incentives. I want to talk about some of the stuff that we do do on a daily basis, and probably the most important for the community and the business community and the citizens of our community is the idea visits, where we go out and talk to over 300 different businesses about ways to expand and how to grow their business in the community. Also, BRAG, a partnership with city, county, GWDC, REEP, and WDDC is one of the biggest efforts we've had in years to have businesses come together in different industrial clusters, sit down and talk about the challenges they have of doing business in our region, and how do we resolve those challenges? And I think that's a great exercise and opportunity for us to look at how we make Wichita and the region more business-friendly. The other issue in the program that we've set up in the last year was the export plan with Global Kansas, Kansas Global, and working with over 100 individuals from the region, we've come up with a new export plan that I think is very instrumental in providing more jobs and more opportunities in our community. The other thing, GWDC, is provide data to businesses. When they think about expanding, they want to know what the opportunities are, what skills are in the workforce, what costs, available training programs, real estate options, utility cost regulations, and that's one thing that GWDC can provide to them and not require them to go to four or five different places. We also act as a facilitator for these businesses. We had a meeting this week with a company that's looking to expand in Wichita, and provided the opportunity of structuring the facility, the communication, and getting everybody in the room that needs to be in the room to actually, hopefully, move this project forward. So we're seeing a lot of great opportunities, and I think you're all aware that we're changing our structure also and falling under the umbrella of the Greater Wichita Partnership. Again, that is to provide some efficiencies. So I just want you to think about what GWDC has done for the community and what we want to continue doing, and the $1 million of private sector, the additional jobs we bring. JCB Labs had nine employees that are looking at expanding to over 15,000 square feet and 100 employees in the next year. I think there's great opportunities. We want to continue to partner with you and work moving forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Matthews.
I'm a professor of biology at Friends University here in Wichita, and I know a lot of people in this room today are here to talk about their support for these county assets, the zoo, Exploration Place, et cetera. I wanted to take just a moment to talk about the multiplier effect, the ripple effect, that these county assets can have on other aspects of our community. About 27 years ago, Friends University began a partnership with the Sedgwick County Zoo to create a program that we call Zoo Science. It's a undergraduate major. Students come in and they take courses at the university. They also take some courses at the zoo from zoo professionals during their time off. It's a very unique program, not very many places in the country can do it, and we're very, very proud of the fact that we have such a wonderful program. That program, Zoo Science, is about the second or third-largest undergraduate major on our campus, and it brings more students from out of state than any other program at Friends University. The total amount of money that's generated in terms of tuition and room and board and those kinds of things from those students can total up to about $2 million a year, and that's not including the money they spend on pizza and going to see movies in Old Town. So it's a very important sort of side effect of the support that the community gets from these kinds of assets. Not only the zoo, but also I have students to do internships at Exploration Place, and again, it's ways of giving these students a chance to be part of a community, learning as part of their education, but also then they're generating economic activity for Sedgwick County. And so it's one of those kind of hidden multipliers, I think, of the money that gets spent, public money that gets spent, that gets returned to the community through sometimes hidden ways. So I just wanted to provide that offer of support for these programs.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Patrick Matthews. I'm at 801 Honeybrook Lane in Derby, so.
Thank you very much. And I'll ask everyone who comes forward, just simply state your name and address for the record, please. Next, I have Barbara Hoppins.
My name is Barbara Hoppins. I live at 447 Putter in Wichita. I hope to represent the membership of the Sedgwick County Zoo. I have been a Sedgwick County Zoo resident my entire life, and I believe that, two things I'd like to address. First, that the zoo is a fabulous asset to our community, and second, that it is a tremendous investment. I challenge anyone to have the history I do with the Sedgwick County Zoo, and I'd like to share my jar of dirt and my spade. As a fourth grader at Peterson Elementary School on the west side of town, I represented Peterson at the groundbreaking of the zoo in 1969. Thank you. In high school, I was a high school executive intern with USD 259, a program that they had, and I worked alongside the director and the assistant director at the Sedgwick County Zoo for an entire semester, and I learned a lot. In addition to that, I've been a longtime member, I've been an employee off and on through many years, summer help, nature trail, summer school, a bunch of different aspects of that. I've been a volunteer in many ways, and whenever the zoo needed a little extra funding, my family, as much as we could contribute, would add to those, such as buying a brick for the North American Prairie, helping fund a little extra for the Coke exhibit with the orangs and the chimpanzees, and also the hospital helped contribute for that, and also, most recently, the elephants of the Zambezi River also added some funding to My relationship also extends beyond just my generation. My daughter is pursuing a career in the zoo business as well, so you can see that it keeps extending. The first thing I'd like to mention as far as the zoo being a fabulous asset, besides the tourism dollars that it brings in, in addition to that, if you come out any day of the week, you see families having a great time, they interact with each other, which is always nice to see, they are happy, they laugh, and sometimes they even learn something. They learn about conservation, and that's important. They learn about conservation, and that's important. In addition, for an asset, our zoo is a worldwide figure in conservation efforts for animal and trying to save species and trying to educate people on the environment and saving and protecting the environment. On the second point I'd like to make is that it is a fiscally efficient entity. I have never seen a business as efficient at taking a dollar and stretching it to the limit and making it work so well. The zoo is tremendous at that.
Ms. Hoppins, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
As a prospective investor and a taxpayer, I would like to see the county continue their partnership with the zoo and help out and make sure that it continues, and I hope to see all of you at the reopening of the tropics and also at the opening of the new elephant exhibit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Patrick Gobel. I live at 2529 Bellwood in Wichita. I'm president of Starlumber Supply, and I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees for Exploration Place. I'm speaking today to urge you to honor the county's funding agreement with Exploration Place, the zoo, and GWDC. As an active member of the Board of Exploration Place and the Development Committee, I have seen firsthand how important the current agreement is to the planning and the future success of our mission. I witnessed this mission being executed at a very high level at Exploration Place through all the educational activities that are inspiring our future leaders, as well as the exciting, new, and updated exhibits Exploration Place brings to our community. We've made this happen through the confidence that the current funding plan instills in our donors and our patrons. Currently, our residents, visitors to the area, and, most importantly, potential new residents, see strong, growing, exciting activities happening at both the zoo and Exploration Place. This feeds additional activity, inspires many in the community to get more involved through either volunteering or their financial support of these causes. Financial stability has also allowed the Board and the Exploration Place staff to take steps to ensure that our beautiful building, which has now become an icon of our city and river corridor landscape, is there for many generations to come. As a third-generation president of our family business, I'm very aware of my role of being a steward for the business. And as I enjoy a spring Sunday at the zoo with my children or spend time with my family learning and playing at Exploration Place, I certainly don't think we want to be that generation that failed in our stewardship of this wonderful place we call home and allow such important and highly visible quality-of-life staples of our community deteriorate. I'd like to thank you very much for your support, and thank you for listening to me today. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Liz Workman.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Liz Workman, and I'm the CEO of Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland. I live at 1040 West Riverside Avenue. I'm here to talk about both the Sedgwick County Zoo and Exploration Place. They are both very important partners and growing partnerships that Girl Scouts has with those two organizations. Girl Scouts exists as a leadership organization for girls. We exist for our girls to thrive, and what's very important for us is to provide very rich and progressive experiences to those girls in a variety of areas. And most recently, we are increasing our STEM-based and very STEM-rich experiences. Girl Scouts of Kansas Heartland is a guiding coalition member, together with Exploration Place, with STEM PAC 2020, and that's all about STEM mentorships from professionals in various fields with Girl Scouts. We are currently in an active dialogue with Exploration Place about growing our partnership in a way that is multi-year. So I'm especially, you know, sensitive and very hopeful that you will consider continuing the multi-year funding agreement with Exploration Place as well as with the zoo. It's important for their planning. It's important for our planning. We are growing girls that have a variety of skills, that are innovative thinkers, that are problem-solving, and we are basically growing tomorrow's workforce, and I know that is very much a part of the mission of these two organizations as well. So we very much appreciate your consideration of continuing those multi-year agreements. Thank you so much.
Thank you. John Rosell.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Rosell. I live at 30 Mission East Row. I happen to have the honor of being Chair of the Wichita Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors this year. I'd like to share with you just two points. One, to certainly applaud your stewardship and your critical review of county taxpayer dollars. That's a very important role and responsibility that you play. Secondly, I'd like to also encourage you to consider carefully the partnership that this Sedgwick County has with these eight entities that have been described today. Being a solid partner with those entities allows them to be able to plan appropriately, to be able to anticipate the partnership between the county and the GWDC, the zoo, and then certainly Exploration Place. So as you go through this process, we would just ask you to be mindful of the importance in your own businesses and your own planning to be able to rely on a solid partnership as you move forward. At GWDC, certainly the chamber is a very supporter, strong supporter, historic supporter of economic development in our community. We're a strong supporter of the new Greater Wichita Partnership. We think, as Gary mentioned, BRAG provides a tremendous opportunity for our region as well, and we strongly support your critical review of taxpayer dollars, but also strongly encourage you to be solid partners as we move forward on all of those fronts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Susie Santo, President and CEO of Visit Wichita at 515 South Main. I'm here today to lend our support to the Sedgwick County Zoo and Exploration Place, as they both play important attractions to Wichita and the region, and to talk about the important role that both of these entities play in our tourism efforts. You will hear today how important these entities are from a quality-of-life perspective, and we absolutely agree. But for us, they are more than attractions. They are economic drivers for our community. Currently, approximately $1 billion, that's a billion, I always love to tell people that with a B, $1 billion are spent each year in Wichita, MSA, by visitors, and that would not be possible without attractions such as the zoo and Exploration Place that draw visitors from outside of our community into Wichita. Please keep in mind that these visitors usually make more than one stop. They shop in our restaurants, they dine, excuse me, they dine in our restaurants, and they shop in our retail establishments, and they stay in our hotels. The impact of visitor dollars in our community is great, and it starts with quality amenities like the zoo and Exploration Place. Our recent brand survey showed that both of these attractions are top of mind when respondents were asked what functional attributes best represent Wichita. They helped define us. We are so fortunate to have these quality attractions right here in our community, and clearly, the Sedgwick County Zoo and Exploration Place have played an important part in bringing visitors, and therefore dollars, into our community. We want to ensure our attractions continue to be healthy, so visitor spending here is not only stable but continues to grow, because visitors will know they can find new and unique experiences for their families right here in Sedgwick County. On behalf of the Visit Wichita Executive Committee, our Board of Directors, and our staff, I ask you to look deep into this issue and consider the reach that attractions like these have on our economic health. Tourism needs the Sedgwick County Zoo and Exploration Place. We all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Suzanne Smith.
Good morning. I'm Suzanne Smith, and I live at 3034 North Wild Rose Court in Wichita. Today, I'm here to speak to you as representative of the Wichita Public Schools, where I serve as the Executive Director of Curriculum and Instructional Design. As a leader in the Wichita Public Schools, I fully understand that we are at a time of deep uncertainty about budgets all across the state of Kansas, and I know that you're facing difficult decisions. But I do want to share with you, and I can't stress enough, how valuable our partnerships are with our community agencies, such as the Sedgwick County Zoo and Exploration Place. We truly value these partnerships for educational outreach experiences that our students are able to enjoy through field trips, school-based programs, and the expertise in the form of teaching specialists who support our teachers and our students in our classrooms. As the socioeconomic status of our students continues to fall further below the poverty level, it's critical to have quality, affordable educational outreach programs, such as the zoo and Exploration Place, who can partner with our local districts to provide opportunities that our students and families would not be able to afford on their own. Today's teachers and the zoo and Exploration Place as extensions and partners in our classrooms are preparing students for jobs that don't even exist yet. The importance of STEM education in today's workplace is paramount. We appreciate all that these partners do to help us serve our students well. I urge you, as you're continuing to make your tough decisions, to think carefully about the agreements that you have with these fine organizations, and the word "asset" has come up several times today. I hope you will vote favorably in favor of continuing these partnerships. Thank you.
Commissioner Peter John has a question.
Yes. If I could ask a question or two, please. I was curious, do you have any idea in terms of during this current school year, how many Wichita USD 259 students go through either Exploration Place or the zoo?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, and I did not bring those today, but I do know that we continue to have students go through that. We have a partnership with Exploration Place, I'm looking at Jan right now. We have a partnership with Exploration Place where, in addition to students coming into Exploration Place, their teaching specialists are going into our classrooms and providing lessons and are actually teaching some of our teachers how to be better teachers of science. So we do continue to support that.
Well, I was trying to get a ballpark idea, because I'm thinking you've got about roughly 50,000 total students
We do.
...in the school district, and I was curious how many had been, as part of the various programs, gone through either Exploration Place or the zoo during either, you know, the current school year or maybe last year, if those numbers were readily available.
That's probably a piece of data that I should have brought today, and I apologize I did not, but I'll be happy to get those numbers if you'd like them.
I'd certainly be interested. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Next, we have Rigby Carey.
Good morning. My name is Rigby Carey. I am at 740 Preston Trail. All I am is a citizen, lifetime citizen of Wichita. I am a very, very enamored supporter of the zoo. My experience this last fall was we were able to go with Mark Reed and his wife to Africa, and I learned so much about the zoo that it has become a very, very big part of my future endeavors to contribute to our community. I hope you do look real hard at anything that has to do with the zoo and make sure that that asset is perpetuated. We, as a businessman, and I've owned a business in Wichita, Kansas, for 37 years, keeping our integrity and keeping assets like the zoo are the only way we are going to make Wichita a bigger and better place for all our citizens, and it's extraordinarily important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Johnson.
Good morning, Mike Johnson, 453 South Fawnwood. I'm the Executive Director with the Boy Scouts of America and would like to just say a few words on behalf of Exploration Place. Our program serves about 11,000 youth and their families throughout 30 counties. We partner with Exploration Place in a number of ways, and as Patrick said before, we're part of that ripple effect, and much like Liz, we're an organization that benefits from and leverages this asset. We have programs that happen there for Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, and then in the summertime, we have day camp programs that visit Exploration Place, and on a year-round basis, we have merit badge programs that take place at Exploration Place. We would encourage the Commission to not change the funding model, because any change would likely have a negative impact on collaborative organizations like us and inhibit the ability of these great assets to reach out to other families in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Milt Doherty.
Good morning. I'm Milt Doherty, the Head of School at the Independent School at 8317 East Douglas. As a longtime educator, I've always believed schools could be more efficient financially and more effective educationally by partnering with other existing community groups and agencies that also have education as a part of their mission. That belief is what led me to seek out relationships with groups like Exploration Place and the Sedgwick County Zoo soon after I became Head of School at the Independent School. Through partnerships with Exploration Place, we've been able to further enhance our STEM activities through projects and programs, both on our campus and at their facilities. These hands-on activities spark great interest and engagement in students, and it simply does not make sense for schools to spend money to try to replicate these activities. I'm confident there are even more ways for us to work together to benefit our students, and I look forward to continued cooperation with Exploration Place. Additionally, we work closely with the Sedgwick County Zoo through our Zoo Science partnership. Our students are able to earn science credit while working with professionals at the zoo. Again, this would be impossible without the zoo partnering with us. At a recent presentation by our students, the phrase "once-in-a-lifetime opportunity" was mentioned by a young man as he talked about this class. I want to offer as many kids as possible this kind of experience. Quick anecdotal story, earlier this year, we hosted a group of Chinese students on a short-term winter camp. There were nine students, a couple adults, and they spent two weeks in our school and in our community. They then left Wichita, went to California, Southern California, Disneyland. Then they spent time in San Francisco, visited Berkeley and Stanford. Then they went back to China. At the end of their trip, they were asked what was the best part of the trip unanimously that was their time in Wichita, Kansas. I ask that the Commission vote for the amendment to the agreements that are currently in place. Doing so will help all of us make better educated decisions on how we most efficiently and effectively continue to make Wichita and Sedgwick County a great place to call home. Thank you.
Commissioner Peter John has a question.
Yes, sir. Yeah, if I could, similar question to what I posed earlier on the education front. How many students have you had, either during this school year or last year, that you might have going through either the zoo or Exploration Place as part of your educational process at the Independent School?
Well, I can tell you that, let's start with Exploration Place first. We have a program, an after-school enrichment program, where Exploration Place comes to our school, and we have a number of kids, I don't know the number off the top of my head, that would be involved in that. And then we also send kids there. Matter of fact, if you go to Exploration Place, and I encourage you to do that, the walkway has student art from the Independent School, so we're actively involved with that. Again, I can't give you numbers. The Zoo Science Program is a relatively new program, and we had five students that participated in that. They give up their lunch period to go there and spend time working with the zoo. It's the second year, and we're continuing to look at ways to expand that program and others like that to utilize those great assets.
And let me just ask, what's the total enrollment at the Independent School, in your K through 12?
We are pre-K through 12.
And your number of your enrollments, about how many kids?
About 525.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just was curious, Mr. Doherty, what's the relationship of these students when they visit Exploration Place and the zoo? Do they pay for their admission, or is this agreement that the school makes for them, or how's that work?
The after-school program is, again, a partnership with Exploration Place, where they come to our place. Those students pay additional fees to do that. We have contracted with Exploration Place to do some staff development for our lower school staff. So yeah, there are some fees that are exchanged, but those would be for the vast, I'm trying to think with all the programs that we would do, but those would be parents that are paying for that. We do pay a little of that when we're partnering for services, but most of those are student fees.
All right. So do you have any idea what the total amount that the school might, does the school pay any money at all?[1799.88] any money at all from the school administration to these organizations at all?
No, only when we would coordinate, like I said, for staff development.
Okay. All right. So the students do pay, and are they, I assume they get some kind of a deal as a student of the Independent Schools? You guys get some kind of a special deal for them?
Just the opportunity to work with Exploration Place.
All right. Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Milt, thanks for coming today, and congratulations on your position with the Independent School. We're very fortunate to have you. Thank you. Next, we have Jason Cox.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair. My name is Jason Cox. I live at 3814 East English. I'm the chief technical officer of Cox Machine Incorporated, and I am also vice chair of the board at Exploration Place. Cox Machine is a three-generation family-owned aerospace parts manufacturer, so we have very deep roots in this community, been here for a long time. When Cox Machine wanted to expand during the economic downturn, GWEDC stepped up. They helped us understand the various programs that were available from the city and county, and provided the assistance and the application for those programs, and then in the realization of getting some of those things for us to help our expansion. I'm also steward for BREG, the Blueprint for Regional Economic Development that was mentioned earlier, and the BREG process is already beginning to distill some ideas into tangible actions, and those actions will, as I understand, be distributed throughout GWEDC and the new Greater Wichita Partnership. This process necessarily takes some time to implement and will require long-term attention. From Exploration Place's point of view, the funding agreement provides a solid base for operational expenses, I think that's been mentioned, and allows us to fundraise for new permanent exhibits. This prevents the museum from stagnating and allows us to excite more young minds about science, engineering, technology, and math, and as a father of two young children, that's very important to me. Exploration Place elevates our city and county's place in this country. Development experts like the Knight Foundation tell us that quality of life is now a huge driver for economic development, especially among millennials, and when they speak of quality of life, this is exactly what they're talking about. We're talking about a top-quality, fresh, beautiful Sedgwick County Science and Discovery Center. So I would ask that you please consider continuing the funding agreements, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have, I think maybe a family of people who would want to speak. We've got Camden, Keedy, Ryland, and Shannon. I'm sorry if I got some of those names wrong. The Bull family, if you want to come up all together and speak, or is everyone wanting to speak, or just one? Give us your name and address, please.
We'll go one at a time. Good morning. How is everybody today? Doing good. My name is Camden Bull, and I will be speaking on behalf of the Exploration Place. I'm going to start this off by asking you all a question. What's the first thing you say whenever a family who's never been to Wichita asks you where they should go first? What are you going to say? Exploration Place, right? After all, it's family-friendly, it has many activities for all ages, it's camps, exhibits, it's right next to the river, it has several parks within walking distance, and it's right here in downtown. And these are only some of the reasons that you say Exploration Place whenever that family asks you where they should go first. I personally have done some really cool things there. I've done anything from learning about human anatomy to doing the water cycle. The Exploration Place and the Zoo have both helped me as a homeschooler, too. They've helped me learn science and math on top of human anatomy, space, biology, and the history of Kansas. Some of the events that they have had in the past have attracted families from all over the state. Their staff is always outgoing, helpful, and knowledgeable, and if we were to lose any of these things affected by this, then it would be like losing part of Wichita. Thank you for listening. Please vote yes to continue the current funding.
Hello, my name is Keaton Bull. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Exploration Place on the subject of funding. I'm a homeschool student, and I have participated in many of Exploration Place's homeschool science programs. Every time I walk through their doors, I learn something new. It's a really great supplement for my science curriculum. I've learned about everything from friction to the dissection of animals, even figuring out how to extract DNA strands from blood. It's a great hands-on way to learn and experiment. The staff is always helpful and encourages you to learn new things and to always experiment with household items to make something different and exciting. In other words, to think outside the box. Having traveling exhibits makes each visit to the Exploration Place new and wonderful. My family and I always enjoy going to each exhibit and discovering new things. We also enjoy watching films in the dome theater and playing mini-golf on the course outside. And when relatives visit, we always go to the Exploration Place and the Sedgwick County Zoo, two of Wichita's main attractions, which are both touched by the Commissioner Court's grants. These places play a large role in making and strengthening our community. They also make Wichita unique and special when compared with other cities. I love the way they incorporate learning with entertainment and nature's beauty. So please vote yes to approve the amendment. Please consider all the families who benefit from these places. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryland Bull. I'm 10 years old, and I live at 12610 East Meadow Court. I'm a homeschooler, and I'm here to ask that you please do not cut the budget for Exploration Place or the Zoo. I love Exploration Place because I've gotten to do some really cool things, like hold a sheep's brain, then cut it open to examine the parts to see how it works. It's one thing to hold, it's one thing to talk and read about a sheep's brain, but to actually hold it in your hands, now that's exciting. I really enjoy learning about friction and how it makes me able to jump high and run fast. Friction is what helps a bat hit a ball. Exploration Place helps bring science to life. Where else in Wichita can you do cool things, like fly an airplane in an airplane simulator or stand in a tornado? And I've also learned about some of the history of Kansas. My family and I also really enjoy the Sedgwick County Zoo. My favorite exhibit is the rainforest. I can't wait to see the changes that they've made to it. I'm excited to see the new elephant exhibit. My family and I really enjoy the lemur habitat. I love the elephant habitat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Shannon?
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay. Nervous, sorry. Good morning, my name is Shannon Bull. Oh, can you hear me now? Sorry. As a homeschool mom of six, I really value Exploration Place and the Zoo, because, number one, they're family-friendly, which means a lot to me. Number two, we learn, and it's exciting and fun. With regard to Exploration Place, my children have attended summer camps, homeschool classes, and visited the different traveling exhibits. My oldest daughter even volunteered there for one summer camp so that her younger siblings would feel more comfortable. They've all benefited in some way from Exploration Place. I love watching their faces light up when they learn something new. And I will never forget the time that I picked them up from Exploration Place from one of their classes. I have the little baby, and we were wheeling him around because I didn't want him to be disruptive. But we went back to pick them up, and Ryland met me at the door, my 10-year-old now, and was asking me if he could please bring home his project. He was so excited about it. Ms. Laurel told him that if he could indeed bring home the sheep's brain, only if I said yes. So he was, he was so excited that he could actually see and touch a brain, and to see the parts that connected for him what we'd only read about in a book. See, it wasn't flat anymore. It was real, and he could hold it, and he could see it and identify the parts. And no, yes, this part is what controls this, this controls that. It was fascinating to him, and that was a blessing to me. So how could I say no in the face of such sheer excitement and delight? So my refrigerator smelled really yucky for a while, but it was worth it because it ignited a fire in my children for science, and what more could I ask for but a passion for learning? And for the Zoo, my family and I really enjoy the Zoo. It's a different atmosphere than any other zoo that I've been to. We love how close you feel to the animals and enjoy the little things, like watching the tiger cubs grow and play. They were so cute. We actually waited in line when we got to see them, their introduction to the Zoo, and we loved to watch the hippos and the penguins swim and go sit by the gorillas and enjoy just looking at them and having them be on the other side of the glass, excuse me. And we were saddened by the loss of Cinda the Elephant, but we've been excited about the new exhibit and the promise that it's going to be awesome. My personal favorite is the rainforest exhibit. I loved how when you entered the building, you were just automatically immersed in the exhibit itself. I loved the bridge that crossed over the little stream, and you could see the stingrays floating underneath, and the birds were flying, and the little animals were crawling in and out. I thought that was so fascinating. And I liked looking for the bats in the trees and watching their antics. So I'm really excited about the changes that they're making and that have been made, and I really hope that the Zoo is able to continue growing and changing. I've enjoyed all the updates and hope that more will follow, but I know that growth and change are not easy and definitely not cheap. I know, because I buy clothes and children for, or clothes and shoes for children who grow. They're, most of them are actually taller than I am right now. So having said all that, I'm nervous in case you cannot tell, I want you to know that as a homeschool family, we're a single-income family, and I think that you will find that most homeschool families are. So when you talk about raising membership fees, raising prices here and there, you're not merely affecting numbers on a page. You're talking about people and families, children who will lead us into the future, and they will be affected by your decision. I know that you have important decisions to make in front of you, and I hope you will take time to consider the people who will be impacted by your decision. Exploration Place and the Sedgwick County Zoo are important places to my family and to this community. As a homeschool family, we look to these places to help make learning fun and to bring it to life. So I ask that you please vote yes to the amendment, and I strongly urge you to not make any changes to the budgets. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for being here today. Next, we have Gabe and Miley Drago.
Hi, I'm Miley Drago, and first of all, I'd like to thank you all for your service to our community. I really appreciate that, and as a homeschool mom, I can certainly appreciate cleaning up messes that I've inherited and didn't have anything to do with, so I can relate to some of the positions that you guys might be into. I am very thankful for tax cuts. I'm very thankful for extra money in our pockets, but I'm also, I can also really appreciate what the Zoo and Exploration Place bring to our community and to enrich our lives. And I just wanted to let you all know that these non-for-profit organizations really enrich our education in homeschooling as well as the public schools, and we're just here to let you know that we support the amendment today, and we do have a Zoo membership, and we frequent Exploration Place, and we have participated in the activities there, and we're very, very thankful for them. And I didn't know if you all know that they have special homeschool classes and education programs that enrich our community as well. So I just wanted to let you know that we support the amendment today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I turn 11 on May 15th, and I like the Exploration Place because you can learn and have fun at the same time. There are so many activities that you can never get bored, and I like the Zoo because you can see so many animals that you could never see if we didn't have it as a zoo, and I hope that you do not cut the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Pho Veng. I'm sorry if I got that wrong.
I live at 400 West Central Avenue. I am a single mother of three children. I believe in education is the key to successful health, healthy life, and a way to give back to community. That is why I am a supporter of Exploration Place. You see, Exploration Place gave my children a chance to explore and challenge their young minds. My children explore the learning of flight. They learn the history of airplanes and how weather affects the flight of airplanes, which challenged their minds to ask more questions of how does airplane fly, and that lead to questions of the functioning of the airplane. My children explore the human body exhibit, which challenged them to ask questions how the human body works and how to care for their health. My children explore the history of Titanic, the history of, my, okay. Children explore the history of Titanic and get to live in the life of the people in the Titanic, and to challenge them to ask how would they survive and what would they do. They also explore the buildings of robots exhibits, the hot air balloon, space exhibits, the engineering of aviation, and many more exhibits. My point is that without the scholarship and financial aid, my children would not have the opportunity to go to the summer camps. These summer camps help my children with their public school project. For example, my oldest daughter wanted to enter a robot competition, and she had to build a robot from scratch by using what she learned from Exploration Place. She was able to perform that task and won second place in the competition. She is now a student at WSU and is majoring in aerospace engineering. If it weren't for Exploration Place program, she would not have had the education she needs to help her decide what she wants to do with her life. Without these kind of program, low-income parents like me would not be able to help their children with their school projects or be able to educate them about the science and history of life. Please vote for the amendment.
Thank you. And next, we have Laura Roddy.
My name is Laura Roddy, and I live at 817 North Whitetail Street, and I just come to you today as a supporter of Exploration Place. I have three children, and I've probably been taking them there for about nine years, and I think there's been tremendous growth I've seen there over the nine years and improved exhibits, and I think a lot of that comes from having some stability there. And of course, I'm a supporter of the Zoo, have a membership there, have taken scout troops and have spent the night at both places, so they're both fun assets for the county and one of the places I think that that's where we send everyone. When they come to town, we take them there, and I have been able to use reciprocity, and I, so I've visited science centers and probably seven or eight other towns through my membership or cities in Exploration Place, and I would say that are stacked up pretty well, particularly for a community our size. So thanks.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of the people who've signed up, but I want to extend an offer to anyone else who's in the audience that didn't sign up or showed up later, if they want to come forward and speak, just raise your hand if you want to speak. So we got about three more, I think, so we'll just give us your name and address and...
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners Karen Page, 17 East Douglas. I'm the president and CEO of Kansas Global, and I just, this is probably out of line here, this is your show, but I came here to do a task today and lend some support to GWEDC, but wow, the families and the children that came up this morning, I'm really inspired, and it's going to be a really great day because of that. I just wanted to tell you that my favorite exhibit at the Zoo is the rainforest, in particular, the golden marmosets and the piranha tank. Figured a little segue there. Kansas Global was contracted to develop, manage, and publish the South Central Kansas Regional Export Plan. But we did not do this alone or in a vacuum. Together with five other funding organizations, including Cedric County, thank you very much, GWDC funded the Export Planning Initiative last year and participated as a core team leader. Without GWDC, our region would not have an export plan to help small businesses grow. GWDC received the original invitation from Brookings Institution out of Washington, D.C. Then they contacted Kansas Global to prepare the "by invitation only" application. Exports were not one of GWDC's everyday objectives, but it still had the wisdom to commit to export growth, to shore up and diversify our battered economy, and include exports in their organizational strategy. As the largest economic development organization in our region, GWDC's support, participation, and influence was integral to the developing the export plan. Brookings shared with me after the recent release of the export plan that our region's export plan is one of the best in the nation. And our stakeholder group, more than 100 participants from all 10 counties, is the largest and most comprehensive that they have seen in the nation. In fact, they've asked me several times, how did South Central Kansas do that? And as a learning point, so they can share it with other folks. GWDC supported the premier economic development product in our region last year and is committed to playing a key supporting role in the implementation of the export plan. The Economic Development Agency is important going forward. Exports are part of the overall economic development strategy. Supporting companies is about collaboration and partnership. Local governments' partnership is helping, in helping small companies grow, helps our community to be globally competitive. I thank you for your time today, and thank you for the good work you do.
Thank you. Do you have the gentleman in front who wants to speak? And then we'll have someone in back.
Morning, Commissioners, County Staff. My name is Mike Pichata. I'm at 14620 East Port of Kings here in Wichita. I had no intention of speaking today. I really just came to visit my old stomping grounds. But listening to these people, thought I'd offer an opinion that maybe it's a little different than some of these folks. I don't visit the zoo much. My children are grown. I do enjoy the zoo when I go. I'm not a member. I have no vested interest in keeping the zoo, other than as a community member. I do think, well, this last summer, I went to Manhattan, and I went to the Central Park Zoo. And my wife and I both looked at each other, and we were very disappointed. And we both said to ourselves that the Cedric County Zoo blew this away. I mean, not even, not even a comparison about that. So Wichita, at that moment in time, was better than New York City. And we were very proud of that. I do think that the zoo and Exploration Place are both community jewels, neither of which I, I used to be an Exploration Place member. Again, my kids are grown. I have no need to go there currently, but I do think that other people in our community do. Not only are there educational aspects there, but it's an excellent place to engage with the rest of the community, to see our neighbors, which is oftentimes not conducive in daily You have the prerogative, I believe, to decide whether you do a single-year funding or multi-year funding. That's your discretion. You all ran for your positions. It's a tough decision. You're facing tough budgets. The zoo, when I was helping Mr. Buchanan doing the budget process, the zoo was always an easy target, I think. It's a lump-sum way to cut the budget, especially outside the operational vision of the county administration. Same with the Exploration Place. However, I think that in doing so, if you have long-term visions for this community, especially in terms of economic development, and job retention, employee retention, and attraction, that quality of life is an issue, and you need to maintain our quality of life. Don't be penny wise and pound foolish, please. Not to say that the five-year agreement isn't the way to do it, but if you decide to go year to year, please give these community benefits, these community jewels, their due course, their due consideration. There are other places to cut budget within your operations. It's hard. It takes a lot of processing, a lot of thinking, a lot of gut interaction with people on a face-to-face basis that you deal with on a daily basis. But really, I think that the, I would urge you to look other places for your budget savings than these operations. That said, as a tax supporter, again, not a beneficiary of these institutions directly, I urge you to spend our tax money in that regard. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Martin Park. I live at 2218 North Lindbergh in Wichita. I too was not originally intending to speak, but in listening to everybody, random thoughts came to my head, and I wanted to share some of them with you. Some of my friends perhaps might say, I might want to torment you with them. But first random thought, on Facebook today, brilliant communication tool. Commissioner Howell, it's your predecessor's birthday today. Jim Skelton, good friend of mine, did a great job. I wish him happy birthday. Second thought is, these conversations have been spirited here, and nobody is falling asleep. But what a great country we live in, because in places like North Korea, apparently if you fall asleep and argue with the bosses, you get executed. A lot of things have been said about what we're going to do with some of these contracts that we have out there, these five-year agreements with Cedric County Zoo. Cedric County Zoo, I remind you of that. Exploration Place. And it seems to be, when I'm listening to everybody, somewhat of a misconception, which I'm sure you gentlemen are going to point out, that you're not here to cut their budgets. You're not here to close them down. You're here to reorganize the way you look at it. And we, I understand that. I'd suggest, however, that please understand that the most important element for any budgeting process, even yours, even through Bill, the important element of any budgeting process is your ability to bring stability to the system and to give people the opportunity, particularly in capital-intensive areas, to look at themselves one year, two year, three, four, five years out. That is critical to efficient planning. I don't know what you're going to do with regards to cutting money to these institutions. It probably will happen, but it might, it certainly will be a negotiation. But the important element, which I think has not been mentioned here, is these five-year agreements for these institutions that represent our community, which is where our tax dollars should be going. It's the lifestyle conversation. They need the ability to be able to plan. And I urge you therefore to consider everything but maintain the five-year concept. It is absolutely critical in so many different ways to these entities that are looking for public support, private support, et cetera. I will not go into more detail. It's just five years is critical from my perspective, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much for those random thoughts. We appreciate it. I think that's it. Does anyone else want to speak? All right, very good. At that point, we'll have Ron come back up. Ron, I just, I want to clarify, the Zoological Society and Exploration Place have already approved this change. I think GWDC has as well, but then the city of Wichita needs to approve it, I think, next week or something. Is that, are those correct statements?
That's correct. In your agenda package, you had agreements from Exploration Place and the Cedric County Zoo that had been voted on by their boards and signed. The agreement with GWDC and the city of Wichita, logistically, we couldn't get all of the work done on that. But we have full assurance that your vote today proving that, we get it on the city council agenda for next week, and it would consummate the agreement in line with the other two.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, we'll ask for comments or motions from Commissioners. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came and testified in front of us this morning. And in addition, I'd like to thank the folks who I've visited with in, at other times, whether it was over the internet, with phone calls, or with private meetings, who, whether they're interested in one organization or another. And I met with board members and citizens interested in the zoo and Exploration Place and in GIDEC. I want to thank everyone who shared their thoughts and comments with me. And I particularly want to express my appreciation to the board members who volunteer their time to serve on the boards of all three of these organizations. And I appreciate the comments from the folks who basically said, yes, they realize the amendments that we're looking at today with all three groups, changing the dates from June 1st to September 1st. I appreciate those folks throwing out the support. We live in a point in time where we've got some significant uncertainty. And I would be delinquent if I didn't point out the fact that one of the budgetary challenges we face is carryover from last year's legislature, where a, what had been a regular and consistent source of county funding was changed. And it's likely to look at, I had a meeting with the Register of Deeds yesterday, and we're looking at over the next five years, losing $10 million in revenue that's come into the county. I don't know what's going to happen in Topeka. I've talked with folks who are in Topeka, and I don't think they know what exactly is going to happen. I know that there is legislation out there that could affect county revenue streams. And because of that fact, I want to try and get some information onto the record that I haven't seen covered so far, and made a request to staff to put together some slides. And if we could, Kristy, pull up the first slide, because all of the organizations that we've talked about here are funded with property tax dollars. And I wanted to get the information out there in terms of how much one mill generates in property tax dollars. And I would add that the county mill levy is just a shade under 30 mils. It's about 30 point, almost 30, I'm sorry, 29 and a half mils. And you can see, if you multiply the one-mill figure for 2014 or 2015, you can see how much is generated. And I throw that out because the basic county functions all come from, have to be paid for, with the largest single revenue source for a general fund is the property tax. If we can get the next slide, Kristy. Want to give an allocation, so that we've got a change in terms of how the funding agreement has changed, 2014, 2015, and what's projected for 2016 in terms of the funds. Now, I would want to hasten to add that this data does not include the Elephant Exhibit expenditure of $5.3 million. But if you look, you can see that the mill levy equivalent, this is just under 1.3 mils for 2014, 2015. And of course, we haven't set the mill levy, so that the percentages on the mill equivalent for 2016 can't be put in there. Now, the funding agreement provision for 2016 isn't changed, but wanted to put that into the record this morning. And because some of the comments about how that the funding for the three organizations that we had the contracts with were like less than 2% of the county's, county's tax revenue. Well, if you look at our property taxes, it's a good deal more there with the, and being about 4.4% of our mill levy. Next slide, please, Kristy. Now, the Elephant Barn, if you take that, that's equivalent, of course, it's a one-time expenditure, but it's a change in the historic policy that we've had with the Zoological Society picking up the cost for new exhibits. And of course, this is, this is a very expensive exhibit. Well, with that 5.3 million, that's equivalent a little over 1.2 mils. Next slide, please. Exploration Place. The funding agreement, we're on track with the current funding agreement. That's not going to change for next year. Of course, in terms of the mill levy and mill equivalent, it's a little over half a mill. But that doesn't include all aspects of county property tax funding for Exploration Place. And I think the next slide covers, okay, that goes on to GIDEC. That's, I'm going to change, change a little bit here, but you can see the percent of the total mill levy and the mill levy equivalent for the $300,000, and that allocation's flat. I think there's one more slide.
It's that one.
There's the one that I wanted to get in in terms of, for Exploration Place, so that we have a full understanding of what the taxpayer commitment is in terms of property tax funds. We're, from now until 2022, we're paying the principal and interest on the bonds that paid for the building. Think of it kind of as a mortgage, like we would on all of our homes if we are homeowners. And we're paying a little bit over 1.1 million a year, and that number continues to increase a little bit between now and 2022, in addition to the funding agreement. So if you look at the total amount, both principal and interest, as well as the operating expenditure, you get a better idea in terms of how much, how much the cost that we're looking at and the total mill levy equivalent in terms of property taxes. I mention this because I don't know what type of events we may face. We live in challenging times. Obviously, the focus on Topeka, I already mentioned, but there may be other changes on the horizon. At this point, I can't anticipate, but I think it's important for public discussion purposes that we look at this from a property tax point of view. In the past, these property tax-funded entities, we've had discussions about, this commission's had discussions about changing the mill levy. In the past, this county commission has raised the mill levy and also reduced it. That's going to be a big part of our discussion going forward as we do our budget. And I want to thank all the folks coming in here to present information to us, because I think it's important to have accurate data in terms of property tax impact. And we've got to balance this with the other organizations within the county that receive property tax funds, whether it's in public safety, if it's in the functions that are involved with the rule of law. So I very much appreciate the boards of these organizations agreeing to let us modify the contract and reduce some of that uncertainty, and I think reduce some of the risk that we're facing in these challenging budget times. And, Mr. Chairman, I plan to be supportive of all three of these motions, beginning with the zoo, and would urge that we take each of them up separately at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions for a couple of people that spoke, if you don't mind. Scott Oaks, would you be willing to come to the mic for just a moment? Thank you.
Again, Scott Oaks, 434 North Belmont, Wichita.
Thank you. And you are basically representing the administration of the zoo today, I assume?
Yes, I am. I am currently Board President of Zoological Society.
Okay. And I know that Mark Reed didn't come to the mic today, which is fine, so I'm going to ask you the questions that I would have asked him. But, so let me ask you a question. What is the history of our funding agreements? Have we gone to five-year agreements for how long? How long has this been going on?
Bill, I'm going to have to look for you. I've been involved with the zoo for probably 24 years, and during that period of time, they've always been five-year operating agreements. The only time we suspended those, when we mutually agreed during the economic downturn, that we would go to a one-year agreement. And Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, that was probably 2009 and '10, we ran without an agreement.
I did notice that our funding from Cedric County to the zoo did go down. It's like you hit, you were up to 5.4 million in 2011, and then in 2012, you went down to 5.1, and then 2013 to 4.9.
Correct.
So that was, you did not have a five-year agreement at this time?
No, we did not.
Okay. So they signed a five-year agreement in 2013. I guess just to make the point to the audience, I wasn't here then. So I assume that the county commission at that time felt, I guess, that the economy was doing better. Is that why they would have come up with an agreement?
I think there was a couple of things that was in consideration. The other thing was looming, as a lot of the organizations today have pointed out, it's critical for fundraising for assets, fundraising not only for new exhibits, but also continuing funding to basically repair your existing assets. To go out to donorship, it is very critical that they look at and go, do we have a five-year agreement? Is my investment, my gift to the society... Is my investment, my gift to the society, the most recent one is, you know, roughly through operations, memberships, managing the zoo, basically $3 million upgrades to the Jungle Building.
So as you get close to the end of the five-year agreement, do you find it trouble, is it trouble at that point to raise funds because you don't have five-year future?
We do, and that's why we try to schedule our fundraising for new exhibits within that five-year kind of gap, try to get into the first one or two years so we can assure people that, you know, at the end of the day, once we've built something, we have the county employees who can take care of that and manage that facility. Most of them are zookeepers. We do have some ground staffs. And again, as one of the presenters pointed out today, we do rely a lot on seasonal work, which our society employees, which are my two nieces who are in high school, work out there in the concession stands, but a lot of it's volunteer work as well.
I guess just, I would make the point then that there are, as you get towards the end of your five-year agreement, you don't really have a lot of future years to know what's going to happen at that point.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And you have operated without an agreement in the past, year-to-year in the past?
Yes, we did.
Okay. That's all my questions for you right now. I'd ask, Bill, from the Exploration Place, if you might come to the mic for just a moment? Bischoff, I'm sorry, Mr. Bischoff. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, Bill Bischoff, 863 Svaldoin, Wichita.
All right. Now, you represent the Exploration Place today, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And I noticed that Jan Luth, the director, did not come to the mic, which I'm going to ask you the questions. That's why I'm asking you today. Can you tell me the history of our relationship of five-year agreements with Exploration Place? How long has this gone back, and have we ever operated without them?
The current agreement is the first one that we have had with Exploration Place, the county. Before that time, I think it was a year-to-year.
And the county hasn't really funded the Exploration Place for very long. What's the, what year did that start?
I believe about 2006, 2007. I'm not quite sure, but...
And just to be clear, make sure my numbers are correct, we do pay about $1.1 million in bond and interest for the Exploration Place each year, in addition to the $2.25 million of annual funding?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
All right. That's all my questions for you. You can have a seat, that's fine. I just want to make a couple of points, going through some of the stuff that's come out in the news recently, and I just want to make some clarifications. Number one, I want to say thank you to the audience for coming out today and giving your opinion. I do really appreciate that. I would like to let the listeners know I did receive a fair contact to me, and I've had a number of conversations with them, and unfortunately, I haven't had time to respond to all of them just yet, but I plan to do so still. Anyway, I do want to go through a few, I guess, clarifications of things that have been in the news and things that I think are relevant to our decision today. Number one, again, as the chairman mentioned earlier, we're not singling out any agency. Every one that's funded in property taxes is being treated exactly the same. This is not an indication of what will happen to the funding. There's been no decision or debate or discussion regarding whether there should even be, should be a cut. It's conceivable there might be increases. We don't know. The reality is that the county commission has not gone through the budget process just yet to find out what our funds will be. We do make projections on revenues and expenditures, and we have to make decisions on how to balance the budget. And right now, based on what we know, it looks like we have a budget that's not going to perform. Our expenditures are greater than our revenue, and that can't last that way very long. If you have a large ending balance, you might be able to operate that way for a year or two, for a period of time, but we're not in that position. In fact, right now, I'd like to point out, one of the things that was reported in the news is they said, well, you have nearly $60 million in your ending balance, and that's a lot of money. And I asked last week at this, at the board meeting, how much money is discretionary? How much money can we actually spend if we wanted to make a decision to spend money? And the answer was about $20 million. And so out of the $425 million budget, we only have about $20 million that is really discretionary. If you want to calculate that, that's about 4.7%. So think about your home budget, and think about how comfortable you would be with taking on promises for increased funding for things that are in your future. You don't know your future. Things are uncertain, and you only have a 4.7% ending balance. And so that is a concern of mine, and also knowing that our budget actually, without changes, would be a negative budget. We actually have about a $10 to $12 million shortfall. And there are some things in Sedgwick County that are not currently being funded, which I think we would all agree are core functions, things like sheriff's deputies in the jail to supervise our inmates. And we actually have six fire positions that are not currently funded. I understand that's a different budget, but nevertheless, it points out the fact that we have a difficult economy. Let me point out that unemployment right now in Sedgwick County is 5.1%. There are some counties that are worse, but we still have an ongoing challenge with regard to employment and revenue as a result of, that reality is not just flowing. And we are really not recovered from the recession, is my point. As you all know, we lost 30,000 aviation jobs in the recession, and most of those have not come back, and those that did come back are at a lower wage. So again, that just shows that we have pressure. And as a previous speaker mentioned, the legislature has made some choices to reduce funds to the county as well. So we're getting, I guess, pressure to find a way to do more with less, like every business has had to do. So I guess those are some points that ought to be thought about as we make a decision. Someone in the recent news story said that we have checks we can't cash. That's not true. We do not have checks we can't cash. We have a budget, and we're going to perform that budget, and anything we commit to will be fine. But that does bring up to, bring to light that we don't have, we do have fiscal responsibility to balance the budget going forward. So we're not going to make commitments to things we can't fund next year or any future year, so there's not a problem with checks that won't cash. We're not in a crisis. We are simply doing our due diligence to weigh in all the priorities and to figure out a way to make things work. So there is no crisis, it's just the process we have to follow going through a budget cycle. There have been dwindling years of the agreement, where in the second year, this year, there's been no suggestions for changes for 2015 funding. What we're talking about right now is the 2016 fiscal year and onward. We actually have three years in the agreement for the zoo left to go. And with respect to the zoo, if you count in 2013, the year that the agreement was signed, they had about a 10% increase in revenue that year. In 2013, actually, I took that back, it was, that's not true. We have a, from 2014 to 2018, they have a 30% increase, I should say, that way, in the operating revenue to the zoo, a 30% increase. And a five-year window for the last five years for Consumer Price Index has only gone up 10%. So we have a budget that's increasing, which I appreciate, but we have to have revenues to cover those promises. And so if you look at where that revenue might come from, I really don't know where it's going to come from. Any budget that has increases of 30%, I think, needs to be questioned, whether or not this is something we can really sustain, and whether or not we can blame weakness promises. And I do want to say that this contract we have with the zoo and these other two agencies does have a clause in it that says we have the right to change the terms if we need to. And canceling that agreement is one option that we have. And of course, today, what we're not talking about canceling, today we're talking about potentially just changing the date, so we can get through the budget cycle and figure out what our priorities are. And I do support that motion when it's made. I support the idea of changing the date of all three of these agencies, and I would support that motion whenever it's made. I do appreciate the clarity of those that spoke in the support of that, in support of these amendments. But understand that there is no promises, whether we're going to leave these funding levels alone, or we're going to have to make changes in the future, we have no idea at this time until we get through the budget process. And I'll wrap this up. I know you guys are getting anxious for me to stop talking. I just want to say that, you know, relevant, Commissioner Peter John did a good job presenting some of the percentages. I just wanted to say my calculations match up with his. 2.6% of our property taxes goes to Exploration Place. If you divide out the number of visitors that they have, divided by the subsidy that we provide for them, that's about $17.20 per visit, if you add in bond and interest and annual funding. $17.20 per visitor is how much the taxpayers are picking up. And I do appreciate what Exploration Place does. It is a great organization. I love the fact that it's a resource in our community, but I want the taxpayers to know that this is something we have committed to. It is not, like, we're not funding Exploration Place. We are. And I expect we will continue to do so with respect to the zoo. If you take the annual funding, not counting the $5.3 million gift for the Elephant Barn last December, we have $11.56 per visitor is what's being expended at the zoo. And I take that back, that may be, that's the wrong one, I apologize. That's the wrong number. I do have it here, though. Let me get it up here. Excuse me, it's $10.21 per visitor. And if you add in the gift for 2015, take this back to 2018, what it would go to is a $2.91 increase. So we go to roughly $12.90 per visitor at the zoo. And so we are supporting the zoo, and I think that's a good decision for the county. I would continue to support the zoo. We're not, I don't think anybody's advocating we would cut the zoo to zero or even necessarily reduce our funding. Those are assumptions. We don't know. Let's get through the budget cycle and find out whether or not we need to make changes or not. But the fact is, we are supporting the zoo. We're just giving him $5.6 million this year, and it goes up to $6.9 million in 2018 with the current funding agreement, without changes. So we are supporting the zoo, and it is a large portion of what we have available to us. In fact, it's 5.5% of the property taxes that we have on the table. It's 5.5% in 2018 is what we would plan, what we would spend in support of the zoo. We spend 4.5% now, and we go up to 5.5% in 2018. So the idea that we're not supporting the zoo is just not true. And all this is today is really the opportunity to get these issues back on the table, so when we go through the budget cycle, we have the ability to figure out our priorities, make sure we fund our core functions, and support those things that are the most important the best we possibly can. And so with that, I'll stop talking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the agreement as amended and authorize the chair to sign this amendment to the funding agreement to change the date that notice of termination is to be given pursuant to paragraph nine of said agreement.
Do we have a second?
A second, Ted.
Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple of questions before we vote here, either from Mr. Holt or the county These are the, as the motion is presented, the only thing that's changing is the potential date of termination. None of the other elements of the contract have been changed. Is that correct?
Yeah, acting county councillor Michael Puppin. Yeah, the only changes that are being made on all three of these agreements is pushing back the date that we give notice to these organizations if the commission has an intent to terminate the five-year agreement. And in all three of these agreements, the date moves from June 1st to September 1st. And that's the only action that would be taken with this amendment.
Okay. And then, second question, Mr. Holt, is this coming on a recommendation of staff?
Once we had discussions with the agencies that this allowed the county to get through its budgeting process, all of the agencies were very much willing to make this change, and staff then is supporting it, yes.
Okay. I thank all the folks who assembled today, and I know that all these folks have got other things that are important on their agenda to do, so I appreciate you taking the time to come here. Being here this morning, I think, is an indication that there was some concern that this would either eliminate the five-year agreement or change the funding amount. And so I agree with my colleague that this action today will not do that. However, I believe that it indicates or implies that there is going to be a change. Otherwise, this meeting today would not be necessary. And I believe that's the concern that so many of you understand and made the effort to be here today for this simple kind of administrative change. And the language conversation that we've had from the bench, I think, implies that we have a challenge that is going to require some changes, whether it's in moving these to a year-to-year basis, or whether it's an actual change in the amount of the funding. Previously, when we've had issues arise as far as funding and our ability to keep our promises with the contract, county manager and oftentimes a commissioner would visit with the chairpersons and the staff representatives, the board representatives from these agencies, and say, hey, we've got a problem, we're going to have to change it, can we work this out? And we have been able to do that on a partner-to-partner basis, rather than take what's a little bit more dramatic action of changing the expiration dates, which, there's nothing wrong with that. It's just a little bit of a change in the way we do business. We have previously been pretty well arms-length with one another in saying, here's what we've got to do, will you cooperate with us in doing that? We didn't have to make this legal change. So I think that is, it is a change a little bit in the way we do business. I respect the partnership we have and the understanding of the board members of these agencies that, hey, sometimes a county might have to make a change. And that's essentially what happened, you know, back in 2013, when we went and said, hey, we have to make this change. So I appreciate the partnerships, and I understand that we've got to work through the budget, but I also understand that we haven't had a recommended budget yet. So we don't know that this sort of dramatic action was even necessary, in my opinion. After we had a recommended budget, if it required us to make modification of these funding agreements, I think we could have gone and talked to our partners and worked it out the way that cansons work out problems between one another on a person-to-person basis. So we have full support of the agencies, and we have, it appears clearly, full support of the commission. And so I will be supportive of this change in light of the fact, but I think it perhaps is a prelude to another meeting that we may have in the future, in light of the conversation that we've had today. But I will be supportive. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Norton?
I'm not going to be supportive of this today. I may be the odd man out. I think you honor partnerships and agreements, and we've spent a lot of time over the years. I happen to go back through other difficult times. This will be my 15th budget that I've worked on, and I went through the budget right after 9/11. I went through the budget right after the '08 recession started, and we made it through. We had five-year agreements with the zoo, we worked with Exploration Place, and many, many other partners. And we always found a way to judiciously and financially stability-wise come up with a budget. And our management and staff did a good job working with partners. We were very transparent in how we put our budget together, and I see no reason. First of all, I think this is kicking the can down the road a little bit to get us to another place where we do have a conversation about, we're going to cut your budget, we're going to go to a one-year agreement, or go to no agreement at all. And I find that distasteful. You know, we took on Exploration Place at a time when it was not running very well, and it needed stability, and today it still needs it. And those, I was in the middle of all those negotiations and thought processes. At the time, the county put money into Cowtown and the Art Museum and many other entities that were very Wichita-centric. And we decided with the city government to divide up a little bit, and that the county would really stabilize and invest in Exploration Place, and really our funding for Cowtown and the Art Museum and some other things would move over to the city only. And that created a stability for all those organizations and a management style that made sure we knew who had ownership. The zoo has been a jewel of our community for many, many years. It's a 50-year agreement that we revisit it every five years, so five years has been the standard for a long time. And we had a five-year agreement when we had some tough times, and we talked about it, and we worked with the Zoological Society, and we came out of it. I see no reason. In fact, if anything, if you're going to give your partners adequate time to develop their budget the next year, you don't want to wait later in the year to give them that notice. You want to be earlier in the year. So I'm not going to be at all supportive of this amendment today. I understand why it's on the table, what it talks about, waiting after the budget, but I don't think that this budget is much different than any other that I've seen in 15 years. Every budget... Every budget is tough. Taxpayers don't want to spend any money for anything, anytime, but they certainly want the services and the quality of life and the good things that make Wichita and Sedgwick County and south-central Kansas a place to live, work, play, and raise a family. So I'm not going to be supportive of this today. I may be the odd man out, but that's okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I'll say, I believe this is just a modest and common-sense amendment to each of these agreements. It's agreed upon by all parties. The fact is, if we were wanting to make any changes to these three budgets, we won't know until after the deadline. Certainly, we could attempt to negotiate in good faith, and if that's fruitful, then that's fine. But by making this change, we maintain our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, and it preserves our options in the future. I think this is a good decision, regardless of, even if we don't change the funding, I think for future commissions, it's good to be able to have this option after the budget process is done, as opposed to trying to make a decision and tell people beforehand. And this preserves our legal options as we move forward, so I will be fully supportive of this. And I appreciate everybody coming here today, the willingness of all parties to work on this. I've gotten emails from people, and I've read them all, take them all into consideration, even though I haven't been able to respond to each of them, but I appreciate everybody participating today. At this point, I don't see any other comments. We do have a motion and a second for item F, correct?
Correct.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
We've already had all three items introduced, have we not?
Mr. Peter John?
Well, then, I'm going to make a motion that on item G, we approve this amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the amendment to the funding agreement to change the date that notice of termination is to be given pursuant to paragraph nine of said agreement. And I'll just state for the record, my reasons for this are the same as on the previous item.
Second. A little motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Mr. Chairman, I'm also going to make another motion that on item H, we approve the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the amendment to the agreement to change the date notice of termination is to be given pursuant to paragraph 12 of said agreement.
I'll second that motion. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye.
So all three motions pass four to one. Thank you very much for everybody coming here today. At this point, I think we'll take a five-minute recess and allow people room to clear, and people go to the restroom. We'll be back in five minutes.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.